I'm Natalie, and this is to the United States of America and to the Republic of the Philippines. Foundation under our individual who are in the state of the park. First off, we just do our part. I'm Natalie. Just to get us started off, just to get my schedule, I have a very nice school senior classroom today. As well as talk to person and I'm virtual for my most successful stuff. So what's going on right now at school? Uh, so the reason that happened is the second first quarter, which was a very good practice. And then we also had um training started, which I've been very proud to be back. I know last year for the level some problems to bring that actually support me ready for the strength of basketball for us. And I know also I thought of the major sports, we have grasshoppers and they don't do the process as well. And then we also had a lot of conversation. And some upcoming events are basically great starting this way, so which I always said to sure excited about this over. Um, and then we have our generations going to us for virtual S C competition tomorrow. Of our best, I'm interested in reaching here. And we are also taking a trip to S C to show you more information on that. And this is as well as we included some pictures of my school's task force. Um, um, this quarter we have some more like group kids um on our last school game all backed up randomly. And then the other quarter we have a couple of our student section leaders um at our last team. They're awesome in that region. Right now, it's a crazy ball. You're also. So our ball sports have ended and other sports were good and everybody are moving into the last stage station first round. All of all of the districts. And then our uh countries being placed third and fourth in officials. And it was really good for our region. And then. But now we have started and had tryouts for our winter sports, boy, go basketball. What is the girl bowling and the cheers from the back? Girls' phones, go skating. And then what is happening at she council? So currently she council really invested in planning our uh method, which in December will happen um December 11th through December 15th. We are all working at the council together to make this um event workouts. The first time we have about this, we're all really excited for it to see how it turns out. Like I said, we're still figuring out all the maybe degree challenge, but we did have each day with Courtney and you know, it's that. Um, a member of which is John, and we're talking to him to see if he would come and talk to our school. Just ask them to help their ass um. Just give us more words first of all, really excited about that, really excited for them. So we'll bring more information following our health be just once it happens. We're all very, very excited about. We have a long drive coming up November 3rd. Um, I can't imagine the order. So um we're hoping to get a lot of work done, and it's such a um organization for one works right without comes with that. And we are also the words of planning our holiday spirit, which is very spring 18th through the 22nd. We just. It's very directionally to students to be, but I'm passionate about that. Um, and then we are working with some volunteer opportunities and hope our responsibility has to protect these. Might help out on the season volunteers and help the kids. Um, and we are also playing our service and fundraising event service. We just sat down with our OSF candidate, so completely don't make a lot of influence happen by not to OSF about the other family in the holiday season. And we are also in the works to do a surprise initiative by inside, we're also some company. Some maximum businesses, we're doing a um stocks, not used stocks, new stocks. So we are going to go to local shelters. Um, and we're also making a little contribution with the school, um whatever grade brings in, like your grade brings a lot of their socks to get to address. And eventually to our stewardess and then to whatever grade is master points. So hopefully the only centers on patient. And then we're also working on a fundraising event for doing a lock-in for the target. Works in the benefit advantage which she comes to us during that moment. You know, so much today, so any questions, trust. I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you. Right, myself and super fun, I'm glad. Well, baby, I'm really in that whole house too, it's a whole salsa. Um, I want to introduce Dr. Jennifer Callen, she's here to see me to introduce our open school parent and primary council members to. Please come take a look, thank you. I'm super excited to go our parent advisory to be our cat. Her special education in Brandon, so I'd like to introduce Mrs. Brady Hiller. She will be joining us today, you think that? Um, so pretty um our care, we're actually seventeen. Yep, okay, and then we got asked for a little bit the first time, yes, it's her term. A lot of first she was a lot of pack skills, right? And then luckily she's bringing that experience back to Brandon. Somehow that is now partially by school. So we're super excited, so we have our chief head boss tell the God and bring her back up for a while. Um, seeing that helps us out, she does a company management right now, so we're going to work out really well to have Brady start in. She wants to bring that idea to her community, the special education program. I'm excited about that this year. Beautiful, thank you. All right, thank you, Jackie. Um, at the top, I think he's have a control party sometime, she's for and she has. Special ability and. With any other, we can include, they lost the sense of opening up in a second too. Um, we are super excited, I'm super excited to show you every session um tonight, unfortunately this time of the year with elementary. So all this is very fun to show me very much um over to in terms of more opportunity with the program. Um, sounds a lot of things, it's human, it's technology, it's math, it's science, um it's innovation. Uh, and yes, let's consider it a lot of fun and the doors make a lot of fun. Um, I got this to their stomach, maybe it's my kind of leaving that the stem, but initially at elementary school for less years. I was descended with P L T W. Um, but we have a great opportunity to show you what it looks like, he died, uh that's really much in the last two. Also, I say we're going to spend forever, um just. So um he worked really hard to align the against the teenagers, whether you mean it's time as well. Uh, so it just like that, you know, pass out uh with the units and how they make huge variables to continue with those. And when children's doors to the top a little bit about what each variable needs to come right now. And we're recording a little video and then we'll get to the content really fast.
Yes. Yeah, so um sorry, so um each grade levels is set uh is science, energy and math. And so every grade level we've been working at math and science, what makes sense um. What they should look at, um the universe and uh and digital and experience projects. But kindergarten is a lot about teamwork, it's a lot about building, um we use plates like wooden uh like saying cubes, the little structure, like bridges. Um, you know, kind of testing, I love hiding a bit and. Uh, you have different qualities of structures. Um, they first we're gonna look at sound waves and how sound travels and it's here. Um, so two things like we use tuning cords to the sand and then we um look at their instruments and lots of vibrating and how that. Uh, as you said, uh in second grade, we're looking at the separating today. Um, we're looking at pollators. And in particular, they have pollators and machines of soldering the bees and some less than bees and so they call. Um, they learn about the environment, they coded, they animation, they're very true, things very cool. Um, and then the ones to build like hands on uh hotels or um you know, these to make yourself other kind of activity. Um, we're very good, a lot of course, emotionally, we have a buddy Brown with plenty of housing protected. Um, in fourth grade, you do a lot of animating and scratch, um putting animals and how they sense the world. So with special identification, animals, and then in fifth grade, we're really set to introduce uh my business here. Um, which is kind of a uh a new tool for us to learn about coding and other things off there. Um, and really good with it, um you know, how we see about the element, so um pretty cool. But it kind of grows with students and we feel a lot of those types of things.
So that was just a little video, they could see it close inside this. Um, that's. So it is. It's time. So the problems. It's possible students so much. The balls of these players just keep getting tested, they can't do this. But if I'm using that, I'm curious. I'll let you start with the next additional, if I wanted to, so I'll solve that. That'll be the second part of the year. Starting back. Okay. So. We're really excited to be um the thinking of community and knowing what that alternative means. So it's something for them. Um, so the most important part, and I have you several times there here, who's giving people to come show you some of the bunch of other nice stuff. Uh, so from fifth grade, we have Maddie and Marley, and then second grade, we have Owen, and then we're.
It's certainly essence, uh second grade, definitely, I see the progression of, you know, years as you call me. Um, so we're gonna walk up and share up and show you the growth of that.
Yeah, I love. We open. Okay. Okay, cute. I get a great large direction. I'm calling and people. I'm gonna be setting up like. So. Um, if you want to work in three homes, so okay, now, because I. There are. When I call, I was. Thank you for talking about coming here, obviously. That's very. I probably like that one. We're a little person. Yeah. So I'm always since I was. I think I'll be there for the reality, that is, I would rather. And this is kind of being a part of the launch. But I'm pretty happy for our child, I think that's pretty cool. He can see that. He's a lot of change. Um, so. Okay, I don't see what's happening. So it's time to see. Actually, I'm glad you're there. Okay, this is scary. Right, please, I can almost see it. I think I see the project, that's nice. It's been a very good. Thanks, you're very good. Okay, so right now, tonight, students have a question. I was afraid, I'd be fine. A friend of ours, I think. I'm having a really good time. Oh, thank you, thank you. It can be so hard, I think you're definitely such a collection, here's the art, um yeah, it's weird for change, oh yeah, okay, thank you. Sorry, it's my office, my office, we're fine. Oh, I like that.
Evening, I was just gonna quickly, yeah, next one. Each of those. For the don't break down, don't make it personal. I just. Yeah. A perfect. So they have four, has two components for the. Uh, you know, that making project. First component is the replacement of good drive. Which is the connecting drive between high school and middle school, showing the gray on the left side of the uh base there. Is all asphalt, we're going to take that down, bring it new base and service, like you know, there's part one. I'll be here exactly by the part, the second component um is our disposal. The redo of the um on the parking lot. We have the ones that's existing there, our disposal, I know. So the area in period that you see will all be totally removed and um. And then the new plan is this plan, which will create a new bus loop. The upper portion of the page that separates from the parent car traffic right now, being able to be involved here next. So this will be separating the buses from the cars, the cars will now be out along the front of the building. And will uh the buses outside, which is on the parent cars. Obviously, more parents off the street into the parking lot. And this plan here will be about about sixty car spaces, what they currently have, will be destroying. Uh, the parking lot is better than that. It also took a price to uh remove the remaining test scores, you see the one test score, yes, we're moving to the same parking area. Uh, so we're gonna move to the price to remove the rest of the yes, uh the asphalt fence and the lighting for the test scores and turn that back to grass. So that will then so. A couple of things that we that this accomplishes, so separates the bus traffic from the car traffic. There's new test guys, uh she's uh guiding students across the parking lot. Um, and then provides more car space for studying, as I mentioned, increase the part to twenty six to eight. We also had anything like holes down the center of the parking lot, right now there's just two. Like holes for any part, like almost down parking lot to uh give more coverage for that might have that. They get off and then very true. That's processing. Uh, incidentally, the contractors have seen one step already, hopefully work last. So very happy to see uh it was in a loaded position. So we're very happy to see the general decisions, so they'll be on the order of the issue site. She done their next work, right? Let's see that. They had five, the two, two schools involved, the middle school, high school, and the middle school replacing some of the stuffs. Exterior doors, replacing all of the doors, prevent that high school has the whole grass. And also a part replaced inside, which many sessions will be the new apartment group and then the apartment hall is here. But the uh you know, back flooring down, so we're just gonna have our response that summer. So that's the work in middle school. At the high school, there is still some pool doors from pool area that we replaced with the new doors. Uh, the pool was being replaced. And we'll relax there, that's the pool where they're hanging down there. Uh, that will be totally stripped down from the back, and then replace with insulation and roofing. This that project, then the interior of the exposed wood deck will be scraped and painted. Then also the walls of the pool, who they're staining. Uh, we got a lot of green, riding and painted as well. So um when we're done there, we're the new dockwork and so forth. Have a top um. Um, well. And the last item, then we're replacing the pool scoreboard, typing system for the scoreboard. And the scoreboard that will be included, this is L A D scoreboard, so it's a picture there. Starting to be by it, like for high, that'll be replacing the original scoreboard that's still in the building for the building pressure. All starts, it's outdated, it's traditional parts available. Uh, so we'll be replacing similar values for registered. Questions.
Good chance. And passions. So please. Our comment for now, I don't know the title of the school, I'm just a second set of color comments, but then. We have two sets, the beginning and the whole time, and the other business, and the band is just color comments on anything, so we'll take a few more then. Did you sign in for color time? This, okay, so you're kind of go follow that, okay. All right, um, actually, the point of the plan that I'm about, and I get. We should bring more education group since I showed the guest. Or. Passion. I get a couple.
Great.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Great. Uh, yeah, yeah. The form reports, um. For form report, I attended the A O S conferences past weekend, and really going to be for our class. Um, this is where four members of the Shang River, I take classes that in listening to our, that help advance. Our knowledge and work in this, um I taught five classes and it was a, it was a really great opportunity. It's nice to collaborate with all the courses and other instructors. Um, and definitely, I appreciate the people that I work with up here and um I just really need you to wanna take other classes and um. First round to uh look at other people who want to accomplish the help we here with education for our board, and it's a great experience, so. Um and it's very exciting, so. Um finance part with Jan. Um only the ten of actually, I would like to report some of the first three levels. See now we got to learn to call seven levels. Um those levels replaced our wine, we're losing that one thing, so it's all a bunch. So tonight seemed like a good time or opportunity to give the board a summary of our bus fleet and the age of each and the second um cost to replace the eight of each of them next year. And let's just start with the other second part. With the dollar. Um in the current fund budget application, we have two million three hundred thousand dollars of bike worth on the last year, the funds we just sold that cost eight hundred thirty five thousand and twenty five. He uh told the boppers that I've signed will be only for me tonight to purchase. That's three boppers. They come on a lot of prices before eighty five, two forty nine. So one of the original bond under two point three million was a tract all we um already spent, so all we um spent is about that leave of nine hundred seventy nine thousand, two twenty six. So now that replacement costs a two point seven million, the next line there, we can put the back of our cost. And I got that number um uh this is our inventory that's all we're currently and he lives the second power, it says here, you'll see the the um person fourteen, they were delivering the issue. Those boppers are recorded at um ten years old. So those are the buses right now that go to replace um the mileage there. Um it shows that they're currently in use in the route where we have there. We have a total of um twenty one routes right now, fifteen general that are on this special like routes. And then we have um total twenty five, that's just like a size there for just a little tiny lot of time. Um that's just what happens in that for um things like repairs or actual activity buses. So then we'll go over to um our estimated placement here. And the first three of them that um will be going out tonight, so we're going to replace them, order them. Uh after the cleaning, they'll check for the next few yourself, and then you see the next summer. And these are the the costs and the funding for those costs, the other ones. Then this is just ten of that, so that's can change a little bit, but looking at the mileage of the boppers and third column. Potentially, we might want to purchase um the seven, two, four, five, seven, eight, twenty, twenty five, they have potential, we'll do that. Have um my money. And then at that point, we would be looking um with a source of our original allocation to free land. So the decision, um yeah, just forecasting eight boppers and then um oh we got to follow that. So a couple of choices, maybe to buy in the rest of the boppers, which we've done before. And then we've been making annual payments out of channel block, or we take a little like a little more than a little bit of our money to pay for the um boppers. So this one's near two thousand and twenty seven. Um the last two boppers, three, that would be uh two thousand twenty seven. And um then it would be good for um because it's been sitting off the back of two thousand thirty three, I mean the box, or about ten years old. Uh that's two years out, or about that, that point. Just wanted to give the board um kind of an overview of our bus fleet. There's some of the items that we just, we have to purchase operating costs. And um unfortunately, what the original um uh dedication was that buses collection. Right now, we're paying one thousand eight hundred eighty one thousand right now for the special bus. So what I did here, I had three percent next year, then five percent, I don't know, maybe four times that. More, but I just wanted to put the number in. So back to the second page here, okay. Um and again, I've talked to them shortly, they said eighty three percent, five percent for red now. Um on the side. Yeah, so when I put it on, you know, this is how they think about or my god, we find this with any angle channel on payment. It's all be on a lot of questions. Any questions? So I'm meeting the board hard going back tonight, just to clarify that the first three, because we're together. And I'm meeting with Josh and the fourth department, I can't imagine. The last train that he was going to just um plus graph of scales out for many, many years, we've already gathered. So um what they've been wishing over the fishing, um plus program, well, program that most students use, many students use. So crazy, it's ours um. And uh yeah, that's all we have, three for next summer, so we end and actually that will be in there for hopefully it'll be six to seven for the following. Okay. Of brand and education association, EAA contract. Have a nice year. Who's the brand of education group, the EAA contract has to go. Question?
I'm interested.
Great, yes.
Yes. Lisa?
Yes.
All right.
Yes. Yes. Although brand administration association, EAA contract. Who's the brand of education group, the EAA contract has to go. So a little couple?
Hey.
Yes.
All right, yes. Lisa?
Yes.
Heather?
Yeah. Yeah. Who are brand and education support personal association, that's right. Who's the brand of education group, the B S B A contract has to go. Question? Well.
Hey.
Yes.
I'm saying who the power. Lisa?
Yes. But yes. Broken, the knowledge of that. From all county current fire community and department. Who's the board of education group, and the elders, representatives, and representatives, who needs to open county advisory. We need us presented support. Question? I get a little problem?
James?
Yes.
Yes. Lisa?
Yes.
Heather?
Yeah.
James, right?
Yeah. A few, a few resources for work. Who's the brand of education group, the new source before has been that. Question? I get a little problem?
James?
Yes.
All right, yes. Lisa?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes. Although it's a version of this. Move the brand of education, approve to purchase one fifty three thousand of the bus and two seventy seven thousand of the buses. And the amount that can see one hundred eighty five thousand two hundred and forty nine dollars from the last payment that's represented. Or the any discussion? All about?
James?
Yes.
All right, yes. Lisa?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes. Yeah. Although contract or recommendations for the tax number four. Page. Who's the group of education group, the two thousand twenty four contract or recommendation in a word amount of one million eight hundred sixty four thousand seven hundred and eleven submitted by the gas for the tax number four, the EAA presented support. Any discussion? I get a little problem?
James?
Yes.
All right, yes. Lisa?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Yes, Rebecca.
Yes. Although all the more recommendations for the tax number five, EMA, EHS. Who's the brand of education group, the twenty twenty four contract for recommendations? And a large amount of one and a more amount of one like six hundred sixty four thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars submitted by the gas for the tax number five. Creating in school. And high school, yes, presented. The part. Any session? I get a little problem?
James?
Yes.
All right, yes. Lisa?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Yes. Rebecca?
Yeah. Thanks. And it isn't bad. So I have one last year. Presentation on what? Um I I was you're asking that, oh, all right, I I just um something else. Your terms. Seven fifteen.